... meeting for July 15th, 2019. I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing "Oh, Canada."
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Guards keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you to the National Film Board for the images of our country and to an alumni of our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio. We'll move on to the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes. Councillor Minhas.
Thank you, Mayor Bill Given. I move the council approved the... Council moved the city council meeting held on Tuesday, July 2nd, 2019 as presented.
Thanks very much, Councillor Minhas. Are there any errors or omissions in that set of minutes that we need to correct before we adopt them? Don't see anybody ringing in. Then I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And we'll go to the adoption of the agenda. Can I have a motion for the adoption of the agenda? Councillor Thiessen.
Thank you, Mayor Bill Given. I would move that council adopt the agenda as presented.
Thanks very much, Councillor Chris Thiessen. Is there any discussion or debate on the council agenda? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. And I think I have one more vote to come, councillors. Just make sure yours is registered. Thank you. That motion carries as well. And that brings us to the delegation portion, one of the delegation portions of our council agenda, the afternoon portion. And I would ask if there are any delegations in attendance that wish to speak to any of our committee agenda items. Is there anyone from the public that wished to speak to any of our committee agenda items? I don't see anybody coming forward, and so I would just remind council and I guess the public that might be watching that we actually now have two opportunities for the public to come forward with our Monday night council meetings. First, in the afternoon session related to committee business or other business. And in the afternoon session, sorry, or the evening session again or in relation to public hearing business, which we'll have in our afternoon session. But I don't see anybody here today, so we'll close delegations with that reminder that this opportunity is available. We have no items of unfinished business or reports, and so that'll take us right into that committee business, starting with item 8.1, the Infrastructure and Protective Services Committee meeting from July 9th. And I think, Councillor Minhas, you handle that meeting for us.
Thank you very much, Mayor Bill Given. I move the council approve the minute of instruction and protective service committee meeting held on Tuesday, 9... Oh, sorry, Tuesday, July 9, 19 as presented.
Okay, thanks very much, Councillor Minhas. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Again, are there any errors or omissions to correct? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Minhas.
I move the long... I move that council approve the Long-Term Economic Development Strategic Plan as presented.
Okay, thanks very much, Councillor Minhas. Council, you'll see the Long-Term Economic Development Strategic Plan included in your package. There was a pretty extensive presentation from the consultant and Rebecca Lee from our Economic Development Department on it at committee. I see that Ms. Lee is here, if she... If there were any questions that council might have. But at this time, I also just want to thank the members of the steering committee, the public members that council appointed, who gave a pretty wide-ranging view and input on what the City of Grand Prairie would need to do with regards to our long-term economic development. Are there any other comments, discussion or debate on the recommendation? Again, seeing none, I guess I would just say kudos to the department for guiding this process and again to those members of the public for their input. And look forward to the influence of this plan over the City of Grand Prairie's operations over the next number of years. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Minhas, was there anything else that you wanted to highlight from that meeting? Or is that all the...
No, that was a long meeting. I think most people were here today and lots of public people were there that day, so it was done. And today seems like nobody is. It was a good, long meeting anyway. It was a good experience for me. It was great. Thank you.
And thanks for stepping in to chair that one for us, Councillor Minhas. That'll take us to 8.2 then, Corporate Services Committee meeting from July 9th. And I believe that that was Councillor O'Toole. Councillor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I move the council approve the minutes of the Corporate Services Committee meeting held Tuesday, July 9th, 2019 as presented.
Thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Punctuation hawks aren't noticing anything, so I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor O'Toole, anything to highlight in that meeting?
I am just looking. Here we go. Got two computers going here, just trying to find information. We had a report from the Director Service Area update. It was quite extensive. You can find that in the minutes as well. We had 2019 property check changes. And we had a note signing items list, which we're actually narrowing down to a couple less items, so. Other than that, it's... I can tell you that the Corporate Services Department is... Service area is working really hard on a lot of items right now. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councillor.
Thanks very much for their work.
Thanks, Councillor O'Toole. That handles Corporate Services. And on to Community Living Committee. Councillor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I would move that council approve the minutes of the Community Living Committee meeting held Tuesday, July 9th, 2019 as presented.
Thanks, Councillor Thiessen. Again, any errors or omissions, council? Seeing none, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries and would take us to our next item of business. And Councillor Plot, did you have something before we moved on to 8.3.1?
Actually, Mayor Given, I apologize. I asked Councillor Plot to present this motion and Councillor Bressi to present the next motion.
Okay, thanks very much. So, Councillor Plot.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I just make a motion that council budget the 2020 community group funding at the same levels of 2019 community group funding.
Thanks very much, Councillor Plot. So this motion is with respect to, as I understand, the overall community group funding envelope? Is that correct? Councillor Thiessen, Councillor Plot? Sure, if you maybe want to...
I think there's just for the... There's been a lot of conversation with council about what we're doing with 2020 group funding. And I think this was just more of a, you know, to give the community and the groups that are out there... Their funding is... They're asking and requesting for this funding fairly soon. And this just gives them the stability that the bucket of money is protected. It doesn't mean that we're going to necessarily fund the exact same groups that we have at the same amounts. But at least it's more to protect the funding amount and then allow us to have a bigger conversation down the road of what that amount looks like potentially in '21 and '22.
Okay, thanks very much. So, open for discussion and debate. Councillor Blackburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I just have one question and clarification. When we talk about setting those grants at the 2019 levels, are we talking about the 2019 actuals? Or are we talking about the 2020 levels that were proposed in the 2019 budget?
I would have to look to somebody from administration to clarify what was coming forward from the committee. Is that Ms. Walker? Ms. Walker?
Thank you, Mayor Given. So the... As I understand it, it will be the total amount for community group funding will remain the same as in 2019 as in 2020. Management has presented committee with a report that recommends funding levels for each of the community groups.
So, just for further clarity... And I did have to leave this meeting partway through, I think, some of the discussion. And so, did the committee ultimately recommend the total... Approve the total amount? Or was it administration's interpretation that the committee was approving the individual funding recommendations for all of the different organizations? Mr. Miller?
Thanks, Mayor Given. So, I also had to leave that meeting a little bit early for another meeting with the GP Storm. But it's my understanding it was a total amount approved. And then September 10th, we'll have a meeting, a CCW meeting, to discuss the allocation, which may change slightly.
Okay, okay, thank you. So that further clarity, the motion here today is about the total pot of money. And then the allocation would come in September. Council would still have input into the allocation come September.
That's correct.
Thank you. Councillor Blackburn, does that answer the question?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Councillor Clayton?
Mayor Given, I guess a question for Councillor Plot. If the intent here is to give community groups sort of some comfort in what it looks like in 2020, however, then in September 10th, we're still going to debate group by group. I don't really know what comfort there will be, as some of them still may not be getting the same funding. So, you know, I appreciate the intent of this. To me, I would be more comfortable if the motion said, you know, to a maximum of this year's funding. However, in all reality, certain groups may not get the same funding even if the total bucket is the same amount. So I don't know if it really provides them any comfort at setting it at that level right now. So I'm just wondering sort of if I'm missing something.
I think, if I can, Councillor Plot, I think at least part of this is really direction to management. Does council intend the overall amount of money available to community groups to be larger than it was in 2019? Smaller or the same? And the... This motion would say that it's the same as it was in 2019. I think that it's really more direction to management as they go into budget preparation rather than additional information for community groups. I think it's fair to say that the community groups themselves would still have some uncertainty. But management would know how to prepare the overall city budget.
That makes sense. Thanks.
Councillor Thiessen.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I appreciate this motion. Originally at committee, I wasn't going to support it. I was happy I didn't have to make motions. The reason being is what I saw was in the report. It was presented at our 2019 levels. But what the report I felt was lacking, and I didn't actually clue in until later, was the fact that the 2020 levels were there. Now, I noticed it before and I did my own little research and correct my memory if it's wrong. But I think the 2020 levels were to be... To fund, or at least the requested funding amounts were about $1.2 million more than what the 2019 levels were. So I thought that's a dangerous sliding scale for not-for-profit communities to work upon. So already, we've reduced them. And we had asked them in the application process to add inflation and to add more based off of their own personal growth and built into their request. And so they did. If we're just going to ignore that altogether, then I don't know why. I understand we're in a bit of a tighter pocketbook times here with the City of Grand Prairie. But for me, I think that's a really big jump and a significant impact on our not-for-profit communities. I was willing to support it at committee because I appreciated the mayor's motion to fund a bucket. So there are maybe some more worthwhile organizations that we don't have to short shift here. But as it stands, and I guess with the lack of clarity, I think the numbers, again, just arbitrary numbers. So for all those reasons and for the impact that I think this is going to have on the community, I know we had several members of our community groups that were sitting and watching in the gallery all the way back here, even though we're meeting in there. There's significant interest in the community as to what this council's going to do moving forward. And I just can't in good faith support this motion as is because I like to look at the whole bucket. And then if we pare it down from there for the 2020 funding levels as it was, then we could do it that way. But at this rate, I think what we might do could significantly impact our not-for-profit sector. And for all those reasons, I can't support this. Thank you.
Thanks, Councillor Thiessen. Councillor Bressi?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Given. Just looking through my notes, I'm just... I just think that as we... As we talk about a $1.2 million dollar difference that was just mentioned, I believe that the difference between that was the request groups made versus how much we actually gave. And looking quickly at my agenda package from community group funding, I believe that the administrative recommendation between 2019 and 2020 was identical both... Identical both years. So I don't think that this is a drop from what the professional recommendation given to us was. Definitely is from asking, but I also think that we can't expect to give 100% of every ask we get every year. Speaking towards this motion, I think that it's important not just for direction for administration, but also I think it's important for clarity to the community that we do value these groups. I know that as I've talked to groups and I've talked to people in the community about the budget reduction, there's a lot of numbers I've heard going around the community about how much we reduce community group funding by. I've heard up to 20%. I've heard people tell me, you guys got a 4% property tax reduction by cutting community group funding by 20%. And the fact of the matter was, between 2018, 2019, we actually increased community group funding. And I think something important about this motion is I'm able to say to groups, hey, not only did we not reduce funding in 2019, but also council's already made the commitment to keep funding levels the same in 2020. And I think that as rumors go around our community, it's important that we're able to give that comfort to these groups. So for that reason, I'd encourage council to support this motion.
Thanks, Councillor Bressi. Councillor Clayton?
Thanks, Mayor Given. A question for administration. If this motion is passed, what will come to council on September 10th in regards to recommended amounts per organization? Will it be like it was last year where administration brought forward recommendations and some were slightly less than was asked for and some were more? Will it just stay at the same so that the equal... The total at the end equals the same?
See, Director Miller, Taylor, should I respond?
Thanks, Mayor Given. So it's my understanding that we'll bring forward the same information that we had in the spreadsheet that was presented last week. And I wasn't at the meeting, but I guess we weren't anticipating that council was going to look at reallocating to different groups. I know we have a meeting tomorrow, I believe, as well to... It's a workshop-type session, so there will be some discussion there as well. And then from there, I guess it'll impact how we deal with it on September 10th. And I think if I can just add to whatever's decided on the September 10th, I think there could still be further discussion as we go through the budget process in November, December. So until the final budget is approved in December, it's still not officially approved until December.
Yeah, I think, Councillor Clayton, further to that, at our request from the committee meeting, certainly it was something that was a priority to me, is that council did have an opportunity to prioritize. You know, we are in a situation where essentially what we're talking about is rather than having the grant requests drive the available pool of money and the pool of money, you know, increasing to meet the requests, what we're talking about is defining the pool of money and then having to do some prioritization around which things we fund. That process of council prioritization hasn't really happened. I think there's an intent to give council a... Explore a useful tool, potentially useful tool, and using a similar process, not the same, but a similar process to what the city's doing with priority-based budgeting internally, where council will get to think about the relative priority of the different community groups. My intention would be that after council has a chance to do that, that we inform those community groups of what that looks like so that they can have a chance to know what that is. But ultimately, I think this is a different situation than we've been in the past. Council has said that we're not going to take a path where the demand drives the money. We're going to say that the amount of money is relatively fixed, subject to council saying, well, we want to do more because there are other priorities. And that may require us to do some further prioritization. I mean, it's... This is the fact of the cycle that we're in in terms of budgeting. And so it... I don't think... I certainly won't expect management to make recommendations just not on an administrative basis. I think it really comes... Lies with council to say what's important to the community. And we are accepting that hard work. And at least part of it says that the amount of available funding with this motion is the same as it was last year. Maybe reallocated differently. And that's the hard work that council has to consider whether we want to do or not. Any other discussion or debate? I don't see anybody else in the queue. Then I will call for the vote on Councillor Plot's motion, which would have the effect of recommending to management that the 2020 community group funding be the same as it was in 2019. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And I think, Councillor Bressi, did I hear you're going to do the next motion?
Yes. Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council allocate $55,000 from the council's Strategic Initiatives Fund towards the pickleball project at Legion Field. And just to speak to this, over two years ago now, the pickleball group approached the city asking for assistance developing some space for them to do their sport. At the time, they'd committed to raising some substantial gifts and kinds and other donations that were committed at the time. But they weren't funded from the city side and there wasn't an appropriate site for them at the time. It's been going back and forth for a couple of years. Most recently, the last time I believe our council touched it was last budget negotiations. We talked about a very expensive pickleball project at Dave Bar and where... When it was that motion failed. And since then, we've asked the Joint Recreation Committee to discuss pickleball. Since then, the Joint Recreation Committee has said that it does not view pickleball as a regional asset. And therefore, it's kind of back in the city's court to figure out what we want to do with it. Administration's been working closely with the pickleball group to look at potential options here. One option is the tennis courts near Legion Field, which are very underutilized now. For about $100,000, they could be converted into pickleball courts. Right now, there's $20,000 for that project allocated towards pickleball from the Alberta Summer Games Legacy Fund. There's $80,000 left to go for that. If we committed $55,000 to it, there'd still be $25,000 needed for this project, which I think that we'd leave it in the group to fund... To either fundraise or find gifts and kinds to do that. So I think that facility, it's well-needed. I drive past those courts almost every day. I often am in the field right next to them for my own recreational pursuits. I don't recall ever seeing anybody use those courts. And so I think it's a municipal facility we've got right now that isn't being used that could be refurbished and get some heavy use. It's... Every time I go to pickleball, I'm hardly playing because I'm waiting for... Courts have been invited to two events now and I'm always waiting, waiting, waiting to get a chance to try when they invite me because they're packing the facilities that are available to them. So I think this is an opportunity to make an utterly utilized facility utilized. Makes it a building to get a recreation facility while leveraging the resources of the community. It's not just the city saying, hey, we'd build this. And I think that this is... Yeah, I think this is a great opportunity and I hope council will help this group make a reality.
Thanks, Councillor Bressi. Councillor O'Toole?
Yeah, I was just wondering, Mayor Given. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Why isn't this going to our budget negotiations in the fall? And why did they go with this fund?
Councillor Bressi or anybody else that was at the committee while this was discussed?
I'd be happy to speak to that if I may. I think a reason that I not put... That I... A reason that I made this motion at committee and I hope we discuss it today is I think, A, the funding source that's identified in the motion is something that has already been set aside for emergent strategic issues. We've recognized that there'll be times where council wants to do something outside of the budget cycle. And this source we can use to do that without taking away from other funded projects. I think in terms of waiting to get to budget time, I don't know what new information that we'd get before then. This is something that's been before council for over two years now. And mostly, I think this group that we've been saying for two years now, we haven't said no to them. We've just been saying, waiting will give you an answer, waiting will give you an answer, waiting will give you an answer. I think they're getting pretty fed up with that and it's getting harder and harder. The longer we put this down, the harder it is for them to raise the support that they need to do this. And I think if we want community participation, at some point, we need to say, yes, we're partners. And so I think there's some risk to waiting another six months to do this. And also, like I said, they've been waiting two years. There's potential this could get in by fall if we approve this today. And I'd love to give them as much playing time as we can.
Thanks, Councillor Bressi.
I'd just like to respond. I think that I would like... I'm going to vote against it just for the purpose that we do have a budget. I know last meeting, we were pretty harsh on administration about finding money and cutting costs and all that. And I just feel that this needs to go through the budget deliberation process like we would any other funding source. So that's my opinion.
Thanks, Councillor O'Toole. Councillor Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I didn't support this at committee and not because I don't support pickleball. I do believe it has a place in our community and I do believe that there is a way to get it within our community. Speaking to the funding amount, the strategic initiatives, I like to refer to maybe as a slush fund, a gray fund. But I... Part of my... Part of my thought has always been with this pickleball motion is what's strategic about it? I mean, currently, the city is going above and beyond actually accommodating pickleball players within our community. We've set aside time at the Dave Bar Arena. That's been very, very populated. We know that there's an interest in pickleball. They've even expanded their hours to evening time. And I think each and every pickleball player out there is appreciative of the fact that we have that there. As Councillor O'Toole mentioned earlier, we do have a budget process. This is a small amount, $55,000 in our budget. It's still these $25,000 on the table for the pickleball people to raise for themselves. They may or may not be able to do it. And then it's just sitting there anyways. But I think if this were to go forward to a budget, I could support it at that point. I just would like to save our Strategic Initiatives Fund for initiatives that are a bit more strategic rather than passionate. And I applaud Councillor Bressi for his passion and his ability to get behind these groups. I know it's important to him. It's important to me that all people have recreation in this community. But I do think the process is the best way to deal with it. And I don't want to see this fund depleted when we actually have something that we could spend the money on just because we want this now. And for that reason, and all those reasons, I can't support this at this time.
Thanks, Councillor Thiessen. I'll jump in to say I also won't support the motion. I would support a motion to refer to budget. If this is truly a priority of council, then we should be willing to say that that's something that we're interested in and we want to prioritize it and we're going to fund it. I agree with Councillor Thiessen that it is not, for me, a strategic initiative. This is a recreation initiative which we've seen for over two years. And I'm not sure about its strategic value. Others might see that differently, but for those reasons, I won't support the motion. And I would be interested or happy to support it even if it did come with property tax impact because I think that's why we have property taxes, to fund recreation infrastructure that many people benefit from. And I'd be happy to do that at budget in the fall. Councillor Plot?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Just a question maybe for administration or maybe Councillor Bressi knows the answer. But have we verified or I'm just trying to understand, I don't know if we've often leveraged community group money like this if we're going to ask the pickleball group to come up with $25,000? How that would look like? Would they have to put the money in the account and then we'd start construction? Or just how do we see that shaping out? Just if we did commit to this today and then they didn't show up with the funding? What would that process look like?
Director Miller?
Now I think it's on. Okay. So I think the process would be that we would... If council agrees to approve the funding, we would just hold that funding until the community group came forward with their portion of the funding. So we wouldn't start the process unless we... The funding was all confirmed?
And in conversations with pickleball, is it sustainable? I guess that's part of it. I know years ago, they had come up with this. I just... I haven't spoke to the group recently to know if it's attainable or not.
Okay. And I... Thanks, Mayor Given. I haven't had the conversation with the group either, but I know in the past, they did find some funding and significant amount of funding. We have asked, probably about six months ago, we asked if it was achievable and we didn't get a firm response. So we can certainly have that conversation with them soon.
Thank you.
Councillor Plot? Anything further?
And I guess, yeah, please, if I can. I've went back and forth on this with Councillor Bressi for two years. And then the reason I'll support it today and I would support it if it came again at budget is I think this group, you know, for two years, we've kind of said, hey, we're going to talk about it and we tried to put it through another process, which, you know, wasn't necessarily fair to the group. But I'm glad we tried to go through the process because that was the intent of the joint rec, in my opinion, to try to put things through there and see what happened. I think it was a good exercise for the joint rec committee to go through. So I'd support it today because I see it's strategic in the other way, that this doesn't affect our budget. And so to me, that's still somewhat strategic. I don't want tax implications unless we have to have them tax implications and we consider how to debate this at budget. But I see this as that administration was gracious enough to say, hey, council, here's some money you can use for strategic objectives. Anytime it doesn't in fact impact property tax rates, to me, that is strategic. So I would be supporting it today, but I'd also be supportive if it come again in the fall for budget deliberations.
Thanks, Councillor Plot. I don't see anybody else in the queue. Then I will call for the vote. Sure, yeah, Councillor Bressi, if you wish to close.
Sorry, I didn't queue in, but I'd love to close. We... You're talking about strategic and for me, this actually is a really strategic thing. And for me, it is often recreation is very expensive projects that are completely municipally driven. And I think that as we talk about how do we expand recreation offerings, especially on the north side of the city where I really think we have got a recreation deficit for citizens on the north, and I think that we need to address that. And for me, I think that the best way to address it is to find low-cost projects that leverage community willingness to contribute. And for me, this is a project that fits... And for me, this is a project that fits ideally into that vision. And I think that often there's talk about people don't want to work with the city because we're hard to work with. It takes forever, you don't know where you're going to end up. And here's a group that I think is very discouraged by spending a couple of years not even getting an answer for us. And I think we've got a real risk that they just wash their hands of it and they walk, they walk away. And I think that that's too bad for this group, but it also gets into the community pathos and other people talk about it. I know there's other people in this community right now that are looking at similar recreation projects that they're interested in bringing to the table and including doing some fundraising for and putting significant resource on their end. I'm scared that the message we send, if we just boot this down another six months, is no, we're not interested in working with you guys. We don't, it's, it's going to be painful if you approach us. So for me, this is actually a very strategic project in my mind. It's not just about pickleball. It's about what's a sustainable way to build recreation, especially on the north side of the city where recreation is such a deficit.
Thanks, Counselor Bressi. With that closed, we will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion does not carry. Counselor Bressi, any business arising?
Yeah, I'd like to make a follow-up motion and that would be to refer, refer to, refer to budget funding of the pickleball project at Legion Field.
Thanks very much, Counselor Bressi. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Counselor Platt?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I guess just, you know, as part of Counselor Bressi's close, one of the things that I supported it for and what I'm concerned about going through budget processes, I don't know if we have the same leverage of budget. Are we still allowed to ask a community group to put up money from that? And if that's the conversation, then I hope we have those conversations a lot more often when that comes to some of these facilities. So I guess my question for administration is, is it okay if we're still under normal capital plan or capital tax funding that we still ask group for their portion of the funding on that? Because they would be chipping in 30% of the project.
Director Miller?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I think it's absolutely okay if we do that and we've done that on a number of occasions in the past. So I think it's, in my view, it's buying into the project and commitment to the project and taking some ownership as well of the project to make, make it successful.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think Counselor Platt, in past experience, it would just be, the motion would be subject, you know, every motion would be approve whatever, for whatever purpose, subject to the community group, you know, raising the balance of the funds or whatever. So that's not an uncommon thing that we absolutely have done in the past. Counselor Thieson?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I'll absolutely support this motion. I think based off of the comments, you could go around this table and realize that there's a good chance that budget this pickleball is going to get passed. Even though it didn't, even though it didn't go through right now, but I would encourage Counselor Bressi and any member of council to who's talking with the pickleball group to watch this round of debates and get their hopes up and maybe they can start running with their fundraising legs here right away. And it does actually work. We saw the most recent example, which is the Bike Skills Park down at South Bear Creek that had a lot of community support, gift and kind, and really made it happen. Good funding from the city of Grand Prairie, but the extra over, what they were saying, what it was going to cost us was all picked up by the community. So there's that opportunity. So I would encourage Counselor Bressi and everyone who has that opportunity, talk to the pickleball people, tell them that there's a good chance, watch this meeting, count your votes and get out there and start fundraising. And we'll have pickleball in an outdoor venue real soon.
Thanks, Counselor Thieson. Counselor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Just got a question to Mr. Miller. If funding goes through in budget, what type of timeline would there be for demolition and the structure of pickleball courts be completed? Timeline in D is kind of.
Thanks, Mayor Given. In this case, with Legion Field or Legion tennis courts, I think it's, we just have to do a resurfacing. I think it was resurfaced a couple of years ago or a few years ago and it wasn't the right surface on for pickleball. So, so now it's just probably clean it up a bit and then resurface it. There is no real demolition to it. So it should be a fairly quick process. I know if, if funding would have been approved today, we were actually hopeful to have it in play probably late fall.
Thank you very much. Just, just wanted to let everybody know that I am very supportive of, of the pickleball. I just want to make sure we do it in the right process. So, thank you.
Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. I don't see anybody else in the queue. And so I think that takes us to item 8.33. Counselor Thieson?
Say, Mayor Given, we have stopped the vote.
The referral motion, thank you. Yeah, the referral motion. Anything else in the referral motion? Thank you for that catch, everyone. I don't see anybody else. Please vote on the referral. Thank you. That motion carries unanimously. Counselor Thieson?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. This next motion is for Disabled Transportation Society funding and I would move that council approve the continuation of funding for the Disabled Transportation Society to September 1st, 2019. And just speaking to this motion, administration and members of council have been in contact with the DTS board and are working through to, to sustainable solutions. This is just part of that and continuing the aforementioned council funding back at budget that we said we'd fund them for the year. So I encourage council, all of council to support this.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thieson. Any other discussion or debate? I don't see anyone ringing in, so I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you.